I would like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. There's at least one item that will be removed from the agenda, and that's Agenda Item Number 20. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda, and we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 3. Agenda Item Number 3 is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on April 25, 2017. The council does have the minutes from that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
I move approval of the meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim, to approve the minutes as they have been prepared. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 4. Agenda Item Number 4 is to a public hearing on the adoption of the ordinance related to zoning of a B3 general business district and I1 limited industrial district to an I2 general industrial district. To conduct this public hearing, I'll call on Director of Public Works, City Engineer, Glenn Olson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We had gotten a request from an individual that wanted to build a kennel in the city of Marshall. And in looking at the locations in our zoning ordinance, we found that there was no location in the city that would allow that to occur. So we did some checking with other communities, and most communities allow kennels, at least in some district in the city. So in our discussions, we are recommending that they be allowed as a permitted use in the industrial areas, both I1 and I2, and in the business zoning areas by conditionally use. And those conditional uses can be the things that the planning commissioner, city council, ultimately think are necessary. But in order to do that, we still have to have them at least located in a zoning district. So that's our kind of brief background of the process and what we're recommending, and would ask anyone from the public to express their interest as well.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. As part of the public hearing, does the council have any input at this time or questions? John?
Glenn, in the write-up here in our text, it says that the -- I'll get to the right spot here. A state license is not required yet in the red line is licensed kennels. Which one are we at?
Okay, the licensing was required if, in fact, the kennel took the strays and the ones that were put in there by the police department or those types there. There is no state license required for any of the, what we would classify as a normal kennel, but someplace that you would bring your animal for a vacation when you were going on vacation, or maybe it's a vacation for them as well, but for overnight stays or that type of use. Also, it also includes, does not include the breeding population for breeding and sales. So those did not require a state license, only the ones that were used for -- help me out with the terminology. For components. So we thought that was odd because almost all kennels operate in a similar method. You have to have your shots and things like that to be kept with other animals. But that was the responsibility of the kennel owner to set that, even though they are fairly equal across the board.
So the licensing is out then, even though the red line?
License requirement is not necessary unless you're doing it for that purpose.
Okay. But the red line, I guess the red line is still in there. So the red line is basically needs to be adjusted, at least in this area.
We were thinking we would not be requiring a license.
So you note, Dennis, that that does need to be taken out.
Correct. Yes.
Other input from the council or members of the audience as part of the public hearing?
It's my understanding that the planning commission or the LNO recommended unanimous approval.
Yes.
Yes.
If there's no other input, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll now consider the ordinance that would establish this zoning possibility. Any questions about that ordinance? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Steve?
Seconded.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll then move to Agenda Item Number 5. Agenda Item Number 5 is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing amending Chapter 86 in the section 86 to 96. And the purpose of this ordinance would be establishing the agricultural district for shrimp production, for shrimp farm use. So to conduct this public hearing, I'll also call on Glenn Olson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Same type of issue is that we really have never, in our historical background, needed a spot in our zoning for shrimp growing. It's just one of those things that's come up recently, and when it came up, we wanted to make sure that we put them in a location in our ordinance that would allow it. So we are suggesting that it be placed in agricultural district for future consideration. That's all we have.
Thank you, Glenn. Anyone on the council as part of the public hearing have questions or input? Or any member of the audience?
Again, Your Honor, the LNO committee did meet and voted unanimously to recommend this.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jim?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. And then the second action then would be to consider the ordinance that would amend the agricultural district to include a shrimp-growing enclosed facility as a permitted use.
I'd move that motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 6. Agenda Item Number 6, consider the adoption of the resolution providing the issuance of the Series 2017A bonding. Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What we have in front of us. We're on -- I believe we skipped ahead here somehow. We should be on item number 6. My apologies. It'll take us back to number 6 there. There we go.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 6 is the 2017 tax abatement. We'll have a public hearing on this, and then following the public hearing, we'll consider the resolution approving the tax abatement. So to conduct this public hearing, once again, I'll call on Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This public hearing is for the proposed 2017 tax abatement bonds, and the two projects we have involved with this are the final segment of the bike trail. That's the part that goes from the county shop along the diversion channel and connecting to Channel Parkway, and then the improvements to Independence Park parking lot, which includes paving that parking lot, curb and gutter, and then also some minor storm sewer improvements in there as well. We have with us representatives from Springstead, Michaela and Terry, and they will be doing a presentation on the tax abatement bonds.
So welcome, Michaela.
Thank you. I'm Michaela Hewitt with Springstead. Good evening. I'm here to talk a little bit about tax abatement on the project before you, and then happy to address any questions. Here is listed the project components by type, including the bike path, the parking lot improvements around Independence Park, and then some of the costs of issuance related to that. Financing for this project, there are different ways that the city could consider financing these projects. However, abatement provides the lowest cost option due to that general obligation repayment pledge on the debt service. There is one bond issue that you'll see following this presentation for multiple projects, and this is one component of that larger bond issue. Creating the abatement, that's before you tonight, provides the city with the authority to use tax abatement and issue bonds. Again, the proposed bonding is including other public or other purposes that are not tax abatement. There are two areas that we're looking at financing. One is public infrastructure improvements related to the bike path, and you can kind of see it in the black area on that map. And the proceeds from the existing tax base, the properties that were identified as benefiting from this project, will be recaptured through an annual city levy. The second project is related to the Independence Park parking lot, and this is a map showing what that area is as well. So it is tax abatement. For those that may not be familiar with the tool, it's generally an economic development tool that cities use for financing of public improvements. It's not an actual abatement or non-payment of taxes. All the properties that are identified to be included within the abatement area still pay the taxes, just like every other property. Tax abatements are created by resolution, and that would be the motion to consider following this public hearing. And in order to establish a tax abatement, there are properties that are identified as benefiting from the improvement, and they are the properties included within this abatement. And the calculation of it is taking the city's tax rate and multiplying it by the tax capacity of that individual property. There is a fixed levy for the term of the bonds. In this case, it's a 10-year period, and at which point the abatement would be complete. There are statutes that define how tax abatement works, how it's used. And again, it's adopted by resolution at a notice meeting, which is tonight after the public hearing. And to be included within a tax abatement does not require the consent of the property owner, again, because there's not an impact on the payment of taxes from those properties as opposed to any other properties within the community. The abatement resolution will define the terms of the abatement. That would include the total amount of the abatement, the length of it, number of years, as well as what the public benefit is for the proposed tax abatement. Tax abatement is a fairly flexible tool as far as financing costs. Listed here are general eligible costs that can be financed with tax abatement, its improvements to private property, to finance public infrastructure, to acquire or construct public facilities. And then if bonds are issued, it's a little bit more restrictive in that the proceeds of the bonds can be used to finance public improvements that benefit those properties, the acquisition of land or other properties, or reimbursements to the property owner for the cost of improvements that were made on their property. There are a few restrictions on tax abatement. There is no back-to-back abatement, which means that once a property is included within an abatement, eight years must pass before you can put that property within a new tax abatement. You also cannot include a tax abatement property within an existing tax increment district, but you can use it on the same property following decertification of that district. The maximum term of a tax abatement is 15 years if all three taxing entities participate, and that means the city, county, and the school district. Or you can go up to 20 years if two or fewer of the taxing entities participate and you receive written denial from one of the other ones. When looking at structuring the tax abatement, if you're issuing tax abatement bonds, the principal amount of those bonds may not exceed the estimated sum of the total abatements. And also, we need to look at what the annual limitation is for a tax abatement. And it's the -- two tests are looked at. One is it's the greater of 10% of your net tax capacity or $200,000. The city's net tax capacity is approximately 10.9 million, meaning about 1.1 million can be included within tax abatements on an annual basis. And again, the calculation of a tax abatement, the maximum amount, is that current tax capacity of that parcel multiplied by the current tax rate for the taxing entity. How has tax abatement been used? As I said, it's a flexible tool, and here's just a listing of some projects that have been financed with tax abatement. You have the traditional infrastructure improvements that include a variety of improvements, as well as some recreational facilities, park improvements, and community centers and civic centers. Some specifics about the tax abatement bond. The total estimated sources and uses is about $350,000, and that includes a par amount of about $325,000 and some additional funds of $26,000. The proposed uses of the tax abatement are project costs of about $332,000, and then some cost of issuance, capitalized interest, et cetera, to equal about $19,000. The tax abatement would be established this year, and then with the first levy for taxes payable 2018, and it's a 10-year term of the tax abatement. This is a map showing some of the properties that would be included within the tax abatement And then this is a map showing the other properties that would be included in the tax abatement area. This is the proposed debt structure for the tax abatement with par amount of $325,000. And again, it's a 10-year term of the abatement. So looking at the schedule, tonight is the public hearing on the proposed tax abatement. Following that hearing would be the consideration of adopting the resolution that would approve the tax abatement. And again, that provides the city with the authority to issue the sale of the bonds, which is a later agenda item this evening. Assuming those steps occur, the next steps would include, on the next page, please, the events leading up to the final sale of the bonds about a month from now, in June 13, 2017. So again, tonight, we recommend that you open and hold the public hearing and close it following any public comment, and then recommend adoption of the resolution that would approve the tax abatement. So with that, I would either entertain opening the hearing or take any questions.
Thank you, Michaela. We are in the public hearing portion, so is there any input either from the council or members of the audience as part of this public hearing? Glenn?
I was glad you had the map up there showing the parcels. And I think in the materials, we had it had a description, not a description, but the tax ID number of the parcels, but it didn't show where they were located or which ones there are. And it was nice that you had that map, and maybe that would've been nice to be included in the materials. As far as those parcels, what did you use to determine those particular parcels?
That's a good question, Mayor and members of the council. The statute loosely defines the properties that benefit by the improvement. One could argue, when you're looking at types of improvements such as a bike path, park improvements, that all of the residents in the community benefit from that. However, if you included all of the properties within this one abatement, you wouldn't be able to use the tool again. So then we take a look and factor in geographically where are the properties closer to where these improvements are, as well as making sure they're not within an existing tax increment district or an existing tax abatement. So that methodology leads to the parcels that were chosen for this tax abatement, as well as trying to eliminate or reduce the number of parcels that are within the abatement to just the amount that's needed to support the debt service.
So it is somewhat subjective. It's not exact. I mean, you're just using a judgment as to which parcel you think should be included in?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Being fairly on the council, can you explain more? Because I understand tax abatement is taking the city portion of the property taxes to pay off the bond in simple terms, correct?
Correct.
Very good.
In general terms, so with tax abatement, I'm not sure if you're familiar with tax increment financing, and I should open up that can of worms.
No, I'm familiar, but I just expect, so people understand what tax abatement actually is.
So, right. So with tax abatement, it's a flexible tool that cities can either capture incremental value growth, like you would with a tax increment district, to finance certain improvements, or you can capture existing value. And essentially, what you're doing is redirecting that existing tax base to finance certain improvements. So the properties that are included within the tax abatement, you're not abating their taxes. They're still all paying their taxes, just like everybody else in the community is. However, the city is redirecting their share of the taxes from those properties to repay the debt service.
Thank you.
In effect, this is like an earmarking of a portion of the property tax from a particular parcel for the specified period, right?
That's correct. It's redirecting a portion of your tax base.
Earmark is a dirty word, I guess, these days, but very useful word, I think.
It's better than abatement. I think it's confusing with the term abatement. Somebody thinks like you're forgiving taxes. No, you're not.
It's a redirection.
You are earmarking. I like that it's a better word.
Thank you.
My one question is, if I live in that parcel, in one of those parcels that's going to be undergoing that abatement, my taxes overall don't change.
That is correct. If your property is within this tax abatement, your taxes will change no differently than the property that's not within the tax abatement, because the tax abatement levy is spread amongst all the taxpayers in the city. It just happens to be your taxes that have been redirected. But in essence, there's no financial impact of being within the abatement to not being within the abatement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other input as part of the public hearing, either from the council or from members of the audience? If?
Will we close the public hearing?
Motion by Craig to close the public hearing, seconded by Steve. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll now consider the resolution that would approve the tax abatement.
I move the resolution approving the tax abatement.
Well, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by David. Discussion?
By John.
Excuse me, by John.
The other guy.
No, discussion. Sorry about that.
We have to figure who the second is. So on a tax abatement, from the way I understand it, is it takes, that money is strictly used for that abatement. So now, these folks aren't, they're contributing to the abatement, but not to the general fund to all that. So it increases the taxes to the rest of the citizens to cover the loss toward this abatement or this bond.
Michaela, I'll let you address that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with this tax abatement levy, starting in 2018, the city will levy for this debt service on the abatement, and essentially, it will be spread against the entire tax base of the city. So the amount of the tax abatement identified by these properties, everybody will still pay their taxes, and then that levy will be spread amongst all of the taxpayers.
But the guarantee for the bond issuances for those defined properties? Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 7. Agenda item number 7 is the street reconstruction bonding. Once again, we'll have a public hearing on the street reconstruction bonding. Following the public hearing, then we'll consider the resolution. So I'll call on Nicholas Johnson to open and conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like the tax abatement hearing, this one is for the street reconstruction bonding that is proposed. And the two projects that this would cover is the TED project for Commerce Park, that's Highway 68 and Michigan Road, similar to what was done on Lake Road just to the southeast, would be mimic there. And then the other project that this would be financing is what is commonly known as the Kmart entrance road that we had discussed at a previous council meeting. And with that, I will turn it over to Terry Heaton from Springstead to do a presentation on this item.
So welcome, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Every year, the city of Marshall wisely issues one bond issue for several different types of authorities, and so, and some of them have to have a special process. So the first presentation for Michaela was for the abatement portion. This is the second component of the street reconstruction, and then you issue one bond issue and you save on issuance costs. So the second component is the street reconstruction, and the authority to do that, I'll describe the authority and then talk about specifically the bond issue. Street reconstruction bonds are allowed as an authority to pay for the reconstruction of streets, and it's a tool that's available and used more and more by cities because everything didn't fit into a box of being able to be assessed, like a 429 assessment bond, and it doesn't always fit into another category either. So these were specifically there to allow projects to happen where there wasn't a benefactor that you could assess. And so the first is to talk about the tool itself briefly. Municipality may issue or sell obligations for street reconstruction or bituminous overlays if the streets are constructed in accordance with a five-year street reconstruction plan. And included with the agenda materials is a copy of that plan. And so the plan is approved by unanimous vote of all the members of the city council. The resolution that you have includes not only adopting the plan, but it also sets a cap for the portion of the bonds that have to do with street reconstruction to be $590,000. And so that's also part of that. The hearing is conducted after, it's noticed in the newspapers, more than 10, but less than 28 days prior to the hearing, and that was done. And there is also a reverse referendum on this type of bond. This is a 30-day time period where 5% or more of the voters could petition for a reverse referendum. So we sell these, and we make sure the 30 days lapse before we'd actually sell this bond. And they're also subject to the debt limit, but you are well below that, so that's not a concern, but part of the law. And then very briefly, on the last page, there are some descriptions of what is included. And so included in here, we have activities that have to do with street reconstruction, turn lanes, improvements, anything that has a public safety function, realignments or modifications, local sheriff-county projects, and just anything related to a street reconstruction. And both of those fall into this, both projects fall within the street reconstruction plan. So the purpose of tonight is to approve the plan, and I don't know if you wanted to pull that up. I think it's part of the agenda. So the public, sometimes it's just available upon request if folks want to see it, but you guys have gone a step beyond and actually have it in part of your agenda materials. And so the plan, the beginning couple pages are just a description of the law, the street reconstruction law that we just went through with PowerPoint, and explaining what the purpose of the plan, how they, you know, it talks about the criteria. Maybe just go up to the next page there. Stop here for a second. We actually have a limit in the resolution that says it cannot exceed $650,000. That's the absolute cap on it. You'll see in the next agenda item, we're estimating the cost for the street reconstruction to be actually $590,000. So that's just a not to exceed, in case there was another item that were identified later on to make sure you're covered. And then the last piece of it is actually showing the street reconstruction plan in Appendix A. And as you can see, the total, the two that are in red, Commerce Park, there's actually a larger total, $1,500,000 is the cost of the project, but thanks to state aid and Marshall Municipal Utility, the only portion that you're actually going to be levying for is $192,000. And then the Kmart entrance road is shown at $360,000, and there isn't any other funding source, so that the two of them together are being financed using this tool.
Okay, thank you, Terry. We'll open up for questions or input as part of the public hearing, either from the council or from members of the audience.
With regard to that one, you indicated there's a dollar limit on that, on this bond, and so that it can only be spent for certain purposes, correct? And so if we have excess money, then that's used to pay back, pay off the bond and make a prepayment or not?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're only going to bond for the amount that's needed. Some of the flexibility has to do more with if you get a premium bid, discount bid, sort of something had to change at the last minute. bid, sort of something had to change at the last minute, but the project costs are the two amounts that staff has asked us to fund, so...
And you're assuming the project's going to be exactly close to the amount of the bond, then?
Sure. I take my numbers from Glenn.
They're estimated amounts only, so we haven't bid the project yet.
The reason I bring that up is, I notice on, in literature here, that about prepayment provisions, and it indicate that bonds maturing on or after February 1st, 2027, may be prepaid, and so those are ones that can be prepaid, other ones cannot be prepaid, is that, or...
The, yeah, all of the bonds up until then cannot be prepaid, and so at that date, and any time after that, if you have accumulated funds, you can call the remaining bonds.
Right.
So basically 10 years.
10 years.
And so that if we, even if we had the money, we couldn't prepay it, I mean, we'd just set aside the money on a savings account or something, or CDA or something, until we can prepay it, is that...
Well, I think how it works in reality, being a former CFO for a city, is if there's, when you bond for it, and you put it in a construction fund, and you don't use all of the money, the bond rules allow you then to transfer it to debt service, and on an annual basis, you're making payments, and if you have extra funds, the amount that you're required to certify as your levy, you can reduce that on a year-to-year basis if you have excess funds, so you wouldn't have to wait till the call date to utilize it, you could employ it by lowering levies today.
By lowering what?
Lowering the annual levy, that's, there's a levy set for each bond issue, and if you had excess funds in any given year, you can lower that particular levy.
Well, what I'm thinking is, on the bonds that are still outstanding, and you're paying interest on those bonds.
Right.
Because you can't prepay them.
Right.
Right, that's the point I was trying to make there. And on these particular bonds, it requires unanimous approval, and by getting unanimous approval and doing it this way, there's a lower interest charge, we get lower cost financing.
Right. This tool, along with the abatement, and every issue tonight, is all part of a general obligation bond issue, so by going through this process, we can include it in with the bond issue, which is the general obligation pledge, and that gives you the very lowest interest rate possible.
But this is the only part of it that requires unanimous approval?
Right.
This part here.
Right, if it didn't pass, we'd have to pull that piece out, and you wouldn't be able to finance it using this tool.
You wouldn't be able to lump it together with the other bonds, then, right?
Other input as part of the public hearing?
So the bond amount you're looking for is approximately $542,000, correct? The two red numbers?
The two red numbers, and when we add an issuance cost, yeah, it's the two. It's 590 is the bond issue size, you'll see in the next item with the issuance costs.
Other input as part of the public hearing, either from the council or from members of the audience?
I move closing the public hearing.
Motion by Craig to close the public hearing, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes, we'll now consider the resolution that would approve the street reconstruction plan and the issuance of the street reconstruction bonds. Questions on the resolution?
I'll move the resolution approving the reconstruction plan.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Prior to the meeting, I had a conversation with the city administrator and the mayor regarding this, and there's some comments that I would like to include in the minutes of the meeting, and the comments would be this. On March 28th, I voted against the development agreement with Fern USA Men Marshall LLC regarding the $360,000 of improvements to the road on their property, and their property is commonly known as the Kmart property. It was my position that the owners of the property should help to pay for a portion of the cost of the improvements, and not have the City of Marshall pay for 100% of the cost, I thought there should be a sharing of the costs. The agreement was approved by the rest of the council, and I would like the record to show that I'm still opposed to the payment terms of that agreement. However, in order to get the lowest cost financing for the project, unanimous council approval of the reconstruction plan and issuance of bonds is required, and therefore, in order to save the City of Marshall money, I will vote in favor of the street reconstruction plan and the issuance of the bonds.
And Jane, for the record, Glenn will provide that to you after the meeting. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
So if...
John?
John and myself.
Thank you.
And that motion does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Glenn.
Agenda item number eight. Agenda item number eight is consider the adoption of the resolution providing for the issuance of the Series 2017A bonding, once again Terry Heaton, representing Springstead's, the city's financial advisor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So this is the item that brings it all together, and so the two votes that you just approved, the two resolutions that you approved, allow us to keep this as one bond issue, for a total of $1,165,000. They're all brought together as general obligation bonds. The other two components are a small improvement portion that is paid for with assessments for the Z-59 outlet in the Carr Pond, sediment remediation project, and then the other piece of is an equipment certificate portion of $170,000, and so that's how we come up with the total, in addition to the abatement part, Michaela presented, and the reconstruction portion. So tonight, the resolution authorizes us to proceed to actually sell the bonds, and so tonight, the calendar, the key events, we're having the hearings and approving, asking for approval of the sale, and we would come back on June 13th, the sale would be conducted at our office at 10:00 AM on the 13th, with approval later on by the city council at 5:30. The bonds that you have would be, well, the bonds would be rated by standard empires, you currently hold a double A rating, and for the viewing public, the higher your credit rating, the lower your interest, because it's a higher credit, and the City of Marshall is a very high credit rating, there is a triple A, and then there's a double A plus, double A, Marshall is right, two notches from the very highest possible, and then many notches below that, below the city. So that's part of why you do very well on your bond issues. The other, the market is good, and there's a little table on the bottom of the recommendation, you see it's kind of gone up and down, and it's starting to come around since the beginning of the year, and interest rates have improved, so the timing seems to be good, and so we're estimating on the bond issue, the combined, bond issue, a true interest cost of 2.35%. That's a very good rate, it's also a 10-year repayment, and that's a very strong thing, some communities aren't able to pay back bonds in such a short term, but of course, you get credit for that on your interest rate as well. So with that, I think we've explained the bonds, there's a solid recommendation, if you have any questions, I'm happy to explain it in more detail, and otherwise, we'll just wait for the vote and...
Thank you, Terry. Questions? If not, is there a motion?
I so move.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes.
I just wanted to say thanks for the slides, it really helps to see something after the PowerPoint slides, so you do a good job of explaining it, thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate this, it makes my job a lot more fun, it's a little bit of excitement seeing where you're going. Thank you, we'll look forward to seeing you in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
We'll move then to agenda item number nine. Number nine, it'd be consider the award of bids, this would be the, consider the award of bids for North 7th Street reconstruction from Fairview to County Road 33. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, you can see by the abstract that we did receive very good bids for the project, and I guess with that said, it's a very needed project, if you've gone and driven on North 7th Street recently, so we would recommend the award of the contract to RNG.
Okay, are there any questions for Glenn?
At this point, I'm fairly certain that the property owners are going to be accepting of the assessment amounts.
All the information I have indicates that, yes.
Thank you.
And entertain a motion then on the first action, that would be the resolution declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures?
So moves.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes, and then the second action would be the resolution accepting the bid, and any, Glenn, one question on that, the timeline on this, the construction would begin and be completed prior to the harvest season?
Yes, it's part of the bid process, and we expect before harvest that the project will be complete.
Okay, other questions for Glenn?
Glenn?
Do we have a, do we have a hard finish date with penalties for accidents?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I move the resolution, accepting the bids and awarding the contract to RNG Construction.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes.
Glenn, thanks for all your work in getting this thing pulled together, it's going to be really nice having that road fixed.
Well, and it's a welcome set of bids, that they were so competitive with.
Really competitive, very good bids.
MMU just awarded their project, the water main project, right along with this, they had, in fact, they had the pre-construction meeting with the contractor last week, and I think they're set to mobilize and get going on that concurrently with this.
Very good. We'll move then to agenda item number 10. Agenda item number 10 is the consent agenda, we'll bring the items up on the screen on the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, the HRA and city council authorized the appropriate officials to execute the granted utility easement as requested by Marshall Municipal Utilities, the memorandum of understanding between the City of Marshall, the Police Department, and Southwest Crisis Center, consider the authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property from the Police Department, consider the authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property from the City of Marshall, consider the request of Marshall Downtown Business Association for crazy days on Thursday, July 20th, 2017, and then the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of a separate discussion? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number, the next agenda item, after the consent items.
Mayor, pardon, pardon me if I missed hearing you say it, but in reviewing or outlining the consent agenda items, that include item 16, did you say that? Did I miss it? The approval of the bills?
Yes, that was included.
So we don't need to pay bills this week?
Oh, well, no problem. Week off for, okay, thank you.
We'll block those, David, I have one in there.
That was included.
I withdraw my...
And so now we're on agenda number 17, it's consider the request that the Marshall Code ordinances be repealed as relates to taxi. Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The last council meeting, we had this pulled from the agenda, and this was an issue that was brought to the city, that there were some concerns about the enforcement and the, of the taxi cab ordinance itself, and that there were problems with some people offering rides on the side, and they were deemed, they were deemed unlicensed taxi cabs, and discussions with the Police Department and the city's attorney office on this, we found the main crux of the issue, and I'll have Dennis take it over in a little bit here. Enforcement gets to be a large issue if you have unlicensed taxi cabs, because it's hard to term, and you stop a vehicle, and if the driver says, no, I'm just giving my friend a ride, and if the passenger said, no, he's just, he's my friend and he's giving me a ride, and, well, was there an exchange of money, and they go, yeah, but it was gas money, you don't have a whole lot to go on for enforcement there. The original taxi cab ordinance was established in 1965, I want to say, I'm pulling, and then the last update was in 1995. A lot of places are dealing with this very issue, now that you have the up-and-coming Uber and Lyft services which are coming around, you have some hard dealings with that, and how do you regulate that as well? From a little bit more, I'll turn it over to Dennis Simpson, who has been working closely on this.
Okay, thank you. Dennis?
I think Nicholas summed it up properly, we've met with the taxi cab, well, two of the three licensed owners, their biggest issue has been enforcement. I attempted to contact representative from Marshall Taxi, I walked down to their business the other day, but Sammy, Sammy was out of town, and I have not had a chance to discuss things with him, but you repeal an ordinance like you pass an ordinance, so we have to introduce call for a public hearing, repealing the ordinance, and we've thought of, you know, is it necessary for city government to regulate this particular business? And we think it's, you know, let the market determine who survives and who doesn't, and so we, and the legislative ordinance committee was in agreement, let's repeal it, we don't need to be in the taxi regulating business, so. And we, you know, we met with the Police Department, and I think everybody from city is concurring with that position.
So the action recommended is to call for a public hearing that will be held at the next council meeting, regular council meeting, May 23rd.
And part of that recommendation, if the ordinance is repealed, there would be a refund to the taxi operators for the unused portion of this year's registration fee.
I think the reason it was pulled from the last agenda and placed here is because it was on the consent agenda prior, and so there wasn't the opportunity for this discussion.
I think we need to seriously consider this matter before we take any action on it. I've done some research on this, and this is really a public safety issue. I mean, it's not about just collecting fees, it's about public safety, and in the state statute, it talks about the ordinance, if we have one, at a minimum, has to provide driver qualifications. In a number of the ordinances for other cities, they have an age requirement, you have to be 18 or older. Well, if we remove that, somebody 16 years old can go out and charge people for rides. There's a requirement for insurance, you want to make sure that they have adequate insurance, otherwise they're not operating a taxi cab. There's vehicle safety and periodic vehicle inspections. In some communities, they require that you go to a mechanic and get a certified inspection, that the vehicle is safe. In other cases, they have the police officers at least review the vehicle and make a judgment as to whether or not it's safe. You know, if we don't regulate this, anybody can go out there and start charging people for rides, and they may have a bad driving record, you know, they may have some driving under the influence charges against them.
That may be happening right now, and that's why Uber is in trouble right now, but is it necessary to regulate?
But, but I mean, those are...
How do you enforce it? If you have an ordinance, it needs to be enforced.
That's right.
And how do you enforce it?
Right, and, let me, I'll continue on this, I mean, we want to make sure that the people are driving and riding in safe vehicles, and safety is a primary responsibility of the city, it's a primary responsibility of government, is to make sure we have public safety, and we don't want them riding around in unsafe vehicles. I think periodic inspections is a legitimate thing, making sure they have adequate insurance, make sure they have good driving records, I mean, all those are things that I think would be good that the city investigates, and other cities, I've got the City of New Ulm, and they've got all kinds of requirements regarding these insurance, age, and so forth, they even have maximum rates. We don't want the taxi people gouging customers on rates, that their rates have to be reasonable. There are other places that it's difficult to enforce ordinances. Now, we have building permits, now, is everyone that does home construction get the permits they're supposed to? If you do your own, do you get a permit, do you have it inspected? Do we say, well, we can't enforce it, so nobody needs a building permit?
Well, in that case, do you want to start a department that has...
Well, in that case, do you want to start a department that has three employees just to inspect taxis? Because we have a very expensive building department here, it costs two of the cities. So, you know, permits, you know, Illy and two other people are enforcing that, so if we start that taxicabs, now we're adding another layer of government in there, and I don't think the two are the same.
But we don't have very.
Because you're correct, there are people who probably don't get permits, and there are people who do. Taxicabs, who's going to stop that taxicab? You're going to stop them every night and check them?
No, you don't have to, but you can do periodic stops, and if they are in violation of it.
What is that legal?
There are ordinances at different cities that they impound the vehicle. You can end up losing your vehicle. You can end up with a substantial fine.
But I would ask Dennis.
I mean, if there's a high enough cost to people violating the law, they'll stop doing it.
Can you just stop a vehicle because you want to?
I'm not saying that you should do that. I'm just saying there are sometimes periodic stops.
Yeah, I think we're opening up a whole can of worms if we start stopping taxis. How do you stop an Uber driver to advertise?
And I haven't said that. I've never said you go out and stop people. I'm not advocating that. But there are people, we have periodic stops by the police, and we have people that can.
Probable cause, Glenn.
Right. I'm not familiar with any of that. I want to obey the laws in everything that we do. But I'm saying is, we can get information. Just because it's difficult, we're just not going to regulate it. Well, that's true of a lot of things that are difficult. And so we just give up and say, "Well, there's just no way we can do it. We'll just let people do what they want." I'm really concerned about public safety, and that should be a paramount concern of all of us. And there are other cities, the City of New Ulm has ordinances. They don't seem to have a problem with it. I'm sure that many other cities have ordinances regarding this. So, I mean, if they can enforce it, and if they can have the ordinances, and it works for them, why shouldn't it work for us? Why do we say we give up?
Is the city.
We're not going to regulate safety, and we don't care if.
Is the City of New Ulm enforcing it?
Yeah, see, I don't know that, I'm not sure that they're enforcing that, and I think that would, to use them as an example, we'd have to look a little more in depth at what they're doing. The other part that I look at with this, and I think that the engine that goes back to the engine that drives this, is the onset of Uber and the instant messaging, picking up a ride and putting themselves out on those types of connects, Lyft and Uber, and looking at that piece of it, and looking at what have we got, maybe six or seven vehicles that operate in town periodically or scheduled as a taxi? Part of this is, is that, you know, if I pick up a ride, and I'm not going to have them typically transport me out of town if I'm using the cab, and I don't know exactly how they're using the taxis, but I know that we also have Marshall Area Transit, which is a direct competitor, and that is something that's publicly owned, publicly regulated, down on a schedule, which is kind of a competition equalizer about gouging the rates. And I guess I would defer back to the PD about how difficult is it to, you know, to do that policing, because there again, probable cause says, you know, that you can pull the vehicle over for other infraction. But if we're going to set up what you described, Glenn, which is noble and it's defendable to do public safety, but we would have to actually set up an inspection schedule, we would have to track it, have certificate, we could do it like other states do, where they have to go through every quarter or whatever, and get a mechanic sign off and bring that in. And, you know, that would all work probably. I'm not sure if it's effective, and I don't know if it would prevent the things that we have concerns about. I look at the back of the taxi place, and I think depending on the load or demand, that probably the quality of the vehicle used varies a little bit, because it's probably a pretty sporadic business. But if it's 30 miles around town, it's probably like my old ass town. I'm not driving 80 on the interstate. It's probably pretty safe. 80 on the interstate, not so good.
So, Steve, you've had your hand up, so I'll let you.
Right, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Glenn's candor and passion with this, but again, you get into the competition with Uber, and there is absolutely no way you can identify who the Uber drivers are, who the Lyft drivers are. Uber and Lyft both have stringent requirements to be a Lyft driver or an Uber driver, and they market that. They enforce it, they watch, and then, have you ever taken an Uber?
No.
Okay. Anytime you take an Uber, you rate them instantaneously, and so there's your quality maintenance. You rate the car, you rate the driver, you rate the whole experience, and they get to rate you. So it's a two-way thing.
Right.
When you do that, they are automatically competing with taxicabs, and yes, if you license it and you inspect them and you do everything, you're theoretically protecting the public, but you're also disadvantaging them from a competitive standpoint. And so our job in government is to facilitate businesses. They're already there. You've got to be consistent with everything, and I think that what some of the other council members have said, you have to, in order to enforce it, you'd have to put layers and layers of enforcement into it. So I would be against.
So I'm going to bring us back to, I think all this is great discussion, and in fact, it would be a very good discussion for the public hearing, and that's really what this agenda item is. Do we call for a public hearing and have that discussion on May 23?
I make a motion that we call for a public hearing.
Motion by Jim.
I would second that.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion? Didn't mean to cut you off.
That's great.
If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll look forward to an active discussion at the public hearing on May 23.
It's all your fault.
It's the Agenda Item Number 19. Or, excuse me, Agenda Item Number 18. Consider the request of Justin McKinney for a conditional use permit to have a kennel in a B3 general business district. The location's 204 Mustang Trail. Of course, the earlier this, on this agenda, we provided for the proper zoning that would allow then this conditional permit. So Glenn, do you have this? Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Nicholas, if you could bring up the photo, it should indicate like the location. So, if you're not familiar with the location, this is the corner piece of property, located along Frontage Road and Mustang, let's see, sorry, you can't read the north property.
McLaughlin.
McLaughlin. And it is in a business district, so it does require conditional use. And you can see the normal conditions we place on it, and then the two additional ones was a solid fence for the outside exercise area, and only be able to have the animals outside from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So with those conditions, we would recommend approval.
Questions? Craig?
I have one question, and it regards the seven-foot-high fence. Why are we at seven feet?
That's our maximum amount of the permit.
Okay, and is it for security? Is it for screening? What's the intent of the fence?
Yes.
Yes for both?
Yes for both, and we want it solid, because if there's openings, the animals usually look outside and see somebody walking by and start barking. So we want it a seven-foot high.
So having gone through the demand of my bride to put fence up on my house for the dogs, we started looking at fence options, and I settled on a six-foot fence. It's five feet with opacity and one foot of gossip lattice. I got a yellow lab and a little King Charles, and the little King Charles can sort of see under the fence, and the lab's pretty indifferent. So I went by the property, because I've never found a seven-foot fence. I've found four-foot, six-foot, and eight-foot, and then 12-foot, but I've never found seven feet. So that seems a little bit difficult to meet seven feet, and if it's for visual screening, unless they're proposing to remove the vegetation that's on two of the four sides, that vegetation's about 12 feet high. So it's a little bit sparse to about four feet, but a six-foot fence would give it a lot of screening, and then the rest of it would be covered by the natural vegetation.
And we use the seven feet just because it's the maximum height without getting a permit.
So your recommendation would be six-foot would be adequate?
I would.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, and that would be, I would make a motion to approve this based on changing Item 4, requirement 4, from seven to six.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Steve. Now, discussion on that motion. John?
I'm just curious, Justin, on our former discussion and what we had earlier, did you ever end up going after a permit then for a kennel, or did you just drop it?
No, we just dropped it because we don't plan on taking any stray animals.
Okay.
That implies that we would obviously get a permit.
I'm just curious, because you got conflicting information out of the state, so I was just curious how that turned out.
I got the same information that Justin received. You read the statute, this has got to be licensed, and then you go to the Department of Animal Health, they kind of turn that definition upside down. They say you're a kennel, and you need a license if you're rescuing dogs. But if you're a kennel and not rescuing, no permit needed. But you look at all the rules, and they say if you're operating a kennel, then there's like two pages of rules.
There's a lot of different things.
It is. It's miserable to read.
Plausible deniability. Yeah, I was just curious how you ended up.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Justin, so if I take my dog to the kennel, because there's not licensing issues, how am I assured that my dog won't catch distemper or kennel cough or anything like that from somebody else who doesn't have all their vaccines updated?
Mayor and members of council, actually, that is a requirement that we have in place before a dog is allowed to stay at our facility. If you ever get a chance and go out to the website to register a pet, there is a three-part section that each person has to fill out that is owner information, veterinarian information, and then pet information, including vaccinations. Also embedded within that software is the ability for us to keep track of when those expire, and so we can send our clients emails to say, "Hey, looks like you get a boarding coming up. Your dog's rabies shot is getting ready to expire," kind of a service that we would like to provide to them to just remind them that they need to get that taken care of.
So, Justin, that's part of your business practice, it's not a state requirement?
Correct, correct. Every place we've ever taken our dogs has required shot records.
Yep.
Everybody does it, so.
And then which part of Tommy they like scratched?
That's not on there, but it's a good idea.
That's it, thank you.
As long as Justin's up here, any other questions for Justin?
No, I was just saying, you know, Craig, you made good points. I've worked with Justin, I'll be abstaining from this vote, because I've worked with him on designing this fence, and we've designed a nice, solid fence. We designed it as a seven-foot, but it had been a lot of waste, because lumber, dimensional lumber does not come in odd numbers.
You have to site build a seven-foot fence. You'd have to buy 14.
It'd cost them more money. I'll charge them more money.
You mark up materials?
Dig a one-foot hole, perhaps.
So, you know, that is, dimensional lumber does not come in odd numbers.
Right.
There is one other piece of information in your materials. The picture on here indicated that the fence would wrap around the side of the building, and through discussions with our turf provider and things like that, we actually decided to shorten that up. So it's actually going to stop at the far corner of the garage to be just a single square area. It makes it easier to keep an eye on them, and it's a little, quite a bit cheaper actually to not put in.
Change orders, not cheaper.
Yeah, so.
Have you signed the agreement with the contractor yet?
Okay, other discussion on the motion. We have a motion on the table.
Glenn, so the seven-foot requirement came from the city staff then?
Yes. It's a maximum height that we allow without.
Without a conditional use.
Yes.
And when that happens in a neighborhood where the max is seven feet, sometimes they have this space at the bottom, and then they go up, so they're maybe not wasting the full.
Right. It depends upon what use they're building the fence for.
Right.
If it's delineation of property, in this, that's different than.
Right.
And Glenn, and that's a great point, because that's the seven feet is a six-foot fence up off the ground, so you don't get soil contact dropped.
You could, yeah, you could.
Any other discussion on the motion? Not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll note the one abstention. Agenda Item Number 19. Agenda Item Number 19 is the Project Z39. This is the Parks and Trail Legacy Project, the bike trail project. We have a change order to consider. Glenn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is for an unknown tile line that was located that we happened to be going over the top of it, and we'd crush it if we went over the top, so we're replacing it. Just as a side note, you never know what you find in those old locations. And I think you mentioned it earlier tonight, that did McLaughlin Schultz used to have something there. And there probably used to be an approach there, because coming along, and you know, in the entire property where you designate where the bike trail is going to go, we run into a square concrete culvert underneath, and it must have been going through their old driveway or something. Nobody knew about, not even our old timers knew that that was there. But you run into it, now it has to be removed. So it's those things that are completely unforeseen, and I'm just warning you, there'll be another one probably next time.
It will be coming through as a change order?
Yeah, yes, it will be, but it's the way it is, so we recommend approval.
Questions for Glenn?
Well, that's, my question would be, I mean, when they do these things, when we put in tiles and we have construction projects, everything's bid, when a company or a house puts something in, they have to get their permit, aren't we keeping track of this stuff?
No. This stuff was from 50, 60 years ago, and you'd think that some of that tile, there'd be a map for it. It's kind of like going to the farm and asking somebody third generation, "Where's that tile?" No clue, not a clue. And so are they working or aren't they working? And some of them might not be working. They've been replaced, they've been, you know, and you run into things like that that aren't even functional still. But we do, in the last 10, 15 years, document everything, where we find things, where we install things. So, yeah, it's a lot better now than it used to be.
And you have Kim Jurgensen on staff, so if it's 100 within 35 years, he knows about it.
And it was before that, he didn't know anything about those. So we try to identify those things the best we can.
Any other questions?
Looking for a motion?
I am.
I'll move approval of the change order.
Motion by David, seconded by John. Discussion? The only discussion, the contractors making excellent progress. It looks good out there.
Yep, weather permitting, will make excellent progress, so coming along.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 21. This, the Resolution, Consider the Resolution for the Municipal State Aid Funds Advance. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a little confusing if you look at the numbers in the resolution. The existing $659,000 negative is our current balance. We get about $690-some thousand per year from the state aid allocation. So we're essentially one year in the hole, and you can go up to five years in advance. It actually gives us more allocation than if you were in the positive. So the amount we're looking for here was an additional $1,003, so that makes it $1,009.68 for the total amount of the dance, even though we're only asking for the additional 1.3. So that's an explanation of why the numbers are the way they are.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Questions?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to ask Glenn. So when you say that it enhances your ability, as opposed to being in the positive, for the public, it makes no sense.
That's correct.
But it's, you're getting, if you use more, they think you're using this, so you get to borrow more.
Yes.
And get the state aid grant money.
Yes, and we actually get more annual allocation, not just that we can ask for more. You actually get more allocation if you're in the negative rather than the positive.
But we have to pay it all back to the state, right?
No, no.
No, free money.
It's not free.
Sounds too good to be true.
Right.
We're hitting dollars for guys.
But it's not alone. It's our allocation.
But Steve's point is good, in that, you know, this is state aid dollars that comes from taxes that are on fuel.
Yep.
And the reason why there's a deviation from the allocation is to fund those projects in cities that are improving their infrastructure and that are growing, and there's some cities that aren't. And so this is the way to even that out. So Marshall has a lot of projects going on, and so that there's more state gas tax dollars that are being invested here than perhaps in some communities where there's not that activity.
Thank you. So I would make the motion to accept this request.
I'll second that. Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda number twenty-two. Agenda number twenty-two, consider the appointment of various boards and commissions. Earlier this evening, council met in a special session and interviewed applicants for different boards and commissions, and based on those interviews, I would recommend that Mr. Don Klein be appointed to the Adult Community Center, the Senior Center of Commission, and Carol, to his first term, and that Carol Kirkhardt be appointed to her second term on the Police Advisory Board. And I offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda number twenty-three. Agenda number twenty-three is commission board liaison reports, actually mine have not met since we last met. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Library Board met yesterday afternoon, pretty lengthy meeting, and we stopped before we were complete, so it was a very lengthy meeting. We're, there's a lot of things going on there, things are moving forward pretty well yet with Michelle kind of getting things lined up. There's a lot of work realigning the foundation and the friends, and getting those things all in order, and figuring out where things are at, and we are beginning the budget process. So you should be receiving a copy, along with Nick, of the preliminary draft proposed request coming in for fiscal year 2018, and that is also being sent to Lauren at the county. And that was the, the original request came from Commissioner Ritter to send it to the county, and I said, well, if we're going to send it to the county, we better send the same thing here, and so we're starting in on that, and Michelle wants to be early in the game, not late in the game, this year, to make sure that we're moving on schedule. So, we're going to be probably one of the first to come in with our draft proposals for the new budget process.
Very good.
And then also, the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission met this afternoon, or at noon, and Nick and I were there, and they're working on naming rights for the ball fields, and working on some of that. So, the intent with that is, is that those are funds that they anticipate being able to use for further promotion, advertising, and marketing to get more things out there. They're looking at getting an advisory board, you know, kind of the core group to move quicker with some of the arrangements and agreements. One of the pieces that Nick and I both talked about with that is, you know, there's a number of options that Darren is working on, on things that he can put sponsorship on. And I told him that I think it's important to figure out, and Scott obviously was there also, and is a key part of that board, I apologize, Scott, for bringing that in. And, you know, I wanted them to consider, as they're looking at the ads, not that we're asking them to fund the maintenance, because obviously we have mechanisms for that, but I want them to consider what it costs just to maintain and turn the lights on as we're putting values to that, so that we can really show people what that place is worth, because it is very much a stand-up. And we don't know, you know, just like with the Red Baron Arena and Expo, we don't know exactly what the annual cost is going to be, because we're just rolling into it. So we really wanted them to keep a track of all the things they're doing there, but there's a lot of energy on that board, and there's a lot of excitement on that board. And I'm really happy to see that all of the tournaments and the things that they're pushing for the coming seasons are three days, because the whole goal of that organization, and they understand it, is heads on beds. You know, that we're marketing Marshall as a business and tourism stop, and that this is about promoting the quality of life here in Marshall, and in the greater Marshall area, southwest Minnesota, but it's also an engine to drive our hospitality and lodging industry, and I think that's really important, and they're very attuned to that, and I think that's very commendable. There's a lot of new, young energy on that board, and it's really exciting. And I want to thank, I want to thank Scott and Nick, and of course, Harry Wyloggi for the work that they do on that, and then all the other people that volunteered to be on that board. That is, that is a really impressive group of people, and they're really kind of finding their, they're finding their keel and finding their rudder, I think, so that's really starting to sail pretty nice, and I'm excited about being able to be a part of that.
Very good, thank you, Craig. One question, Craig, and certainly you may want to refer this to Scott, but the status of the fields and when they'll be playable? Or maybe that's a Glenn question?
Scott, you want me to, I mean, they talked about it.
Yeah, we're still at June first today.
Thank you.
Yeah, and for the people that may be watching this on public, or on our local access cable, is Scott said that they're still pushing for the June first date. That's, and they're working hard today. When I left the meeting, I paid attention, there's a lot of activity out there, so it's encouraging.
Craig, did I hear you right, what they, they're talking about are discussing naming rights for the fields?
Yeah, there's interest in, with a lot of our, not the big business, but a lot of Marshall business want to be part of what's going on out there, and they understand the value of what that brings to the community. So, there are four ball fields that could have individual business names on it. We have an obligation to Schwan's, that that's the Schwan's Amateur Sports Complex, so that's already part of the original land agreement. But, yeah, there's going to be advertisement, billboards, and other signage.
But you're naming the field for a certain company?
It will be labeled as a, yeah, yeah, exactly, just like the Avera Plaza and the rest of that, yeah, it's all about naming.
Have we done that with any other playing fields in town? They're named after a certain company?
The two rinks, both the rinks, there's the Reinhardt Rink, the main rink at the Lockwood, or the Red Baron Arena.
Other than that facility, I mean, I'm talking about ball fields.
Legion Field.
Legion Field, Matkey Field.
That's not a business, though.
We had the Lockwood ice arena before we had the Red Baron Arena.
That's correct.
Yeah. And before that, it was Schwan's.
I'm talking ball fields.
Yeah, before that, it was actually the Schwan's, and then it was before that, it was Red Baron, because they, when we needed Zamboni and some other upgrades there in 2001, they, Schwan's put twenty-five thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars towards that facility.
I guess I'm wondering where we're headed, are we going to name parks after companies? Are we going to name City Hall after a company? I mean, where do we stop this naming rights?
Zinski Construction.
It's business, I mean, it's basically what we're selling, Glenn, is advertisement.
Well, we're providing city functions, we're providing parks and ball fields, I mean, those are things that cities do.
Right.
And it just seems like we're selling naming rights to everything, and, I mean, is that really what the city should be doing? I mean, we collect taxes to pay for things, and, you know, I just, I think we're getting carried away with this naming, everything. I mean, maybe we should have names on these chairs or something, we can sell these, and say, this is the...
I should show you my closet, when I leave on the weekends, I have fifteen names on my shirt.
I think we have to be careful about what we're doing. We just seem to be going down this path, and where's it going to end?
I guess my question back on that, because it's business advertising, it's no different than when you go to a sports, high school sports event, and they hand out a program, and the local businesses have a business card-sized advertisement. Everybody understands that they're playing to a group of people, and they want to position themselves, A, to say that I'm supportive, in support of this, and B, I want to be a part of it. I think we have to be careful, and we had that conversation about adult beverages and those types of things involving our youth, and keeping a separation on that, and having some kind of a community moral set, and I really agree with that, and I think we took good position on that when we were looking at other sponsors or brand, having preferred brand, or the brand of the Red Baron Arena and Expo, and we put a kibosh to that, and we might have left some money on the table, and I think it was good. I think if we need, if we need that kind of funding to make this thing fly, I think we're, we built a bad project. However, on the other hand, if people want to step up, and it's not naming rights, it's sponsorship, it's sponsorship, and that's the way the world ticks right now, it's social media, it's all the other places to get their name out in front of somebody. You go into some of these school districts, and they're putting advertisement on the school buses, because that helps them offset the cost of transportation.
But the question is, is that good? I mean, is that the road we want to go down?
Does it drop the taxes?
Well, is it all about money? Anything we do is about money, money, money.
As a business owner, you know, we have to advertise, and what difference makes if advertised on a billboard in town, which I think is ugly, to have a bunch of billboards lined up, or we advertise the field? As a business owner, I one time, I think for three years in a row, I was Marshall Restaurant and sponsored by James Lozinski Construction. It caught me on a bad day, but a lot of...
Not bad, just weak.
So there is a lot of that advertising. I understand what you're saying, Glenn, but that is, if we don't do it, other cities will, they'll have an advantage over us funding-wise.
Right.
Well, and there is some precedent in terms of, and I'll use the example of the junior T-ball through community services for years, that's had a sponsor, in fact, I think it's A C M C now.
And well, the park, I mean, I've got individual names and sponsorship at the 911 Park, are bricks.
On the pavers, yep.
You paid, and if you wanted a really big brick, you got...
If you go to a Marshall Tiger football game, it's a D and G first down, and they get a lot of them, so you hear that name a lot. It is, it's a D and G first down.
So, thank you for your report, Craig, this is a, you're just reporting on perhaps a future action that's going to come here.
Absolutely, but it's things that I want to prepare the council for, because, and I appreciate Councilman Baricola's input on that, and I've tried to carry forward the crystal ball. I mean, I'm trying to, when I hear proposal or discussion come through, whether it's on the library board, if it's at the Merritt Center, or on the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission, I'm trying to anticipate what some of the other feelings, input, and vision is, and I try to, and I try to transmit that, because I respect that, and I think that the good decision is a balance of all of those concerns and all of those ideas. I don't try to just forward what my, what my feeling is, and I maybe do it to a fault. I probably irritate a number of the other members, because I'm constantly parroting that out about, you need to think about how this looks, because you can't just focus what your wishes are, there are a lot of other thoughts, there's a lot of other ideas here, and you need to remember what this balance is about who actually owns the facility, and what some of the ideas and ideals are, and we need to be respectful of that, and I think they are. But I think they also understand in this day and age that you're not going to move forward unless you take advantage and leverage all of people's needs to be engaged. Some of it is, I mean, there's pride in it, there's businesses that I can tell you, I'm not going to name names right now, but that stick an awful lot of money in there, and they maybe get a dime on the dollar back in direct money, but in what it does for their own meaning, and it's how they contribute. They can't volunteer to be a parent coach, or an adult coach, or anything else, but they've got that piece that they can put in there with their business. It's like, it's like Councilman Lozinski volunteering for how many years to pull the band bus down. You know, he probably didn't rap the rap, or the band trailer, the marching band trailer, he probably didn't rap that trailer in Lozinski Construction, but you can bet there's a little bit of pride when he toes that down, and that's like putting your name on these ballparks or on these rinks. That's good for the community, and I think it shows by, and I hope we see people from outside of Marshall putting names on some of this, too, because this benefits just more than Marshall. But I'll stop there, I appreciate, I respect your position.
Let me just give you a quick response, and then I'll be done. At one time, people did things because it was the right thing to do. Now it seems they're doing it for advertising. And at one time, we had an important business leader in this community, when he gave large sums of money, he didn't want his name associated with it.
Right.
He gave it because it was the right thing to do, and now, they're giving it before advertising. You were talking about the bricks. Well, I assume the people that are buying the bricks there are not doing it for recognition or advertising. They're doing it because it's the right thing to do, and we're acknowledging that they're doing the right thing. But, you know, are they buying these bricks simply so their name is out there, and they can get some free advertisement? And like I said, and my feeling is, I try and do things because it's the right thing to do, not because there's money in it for me.
Right.
And that's why I give to churches, that's why I give to charities, and it just seems like we're getting away from that. We're saying, the emphasis is on advertising, not doing what's in the best interest of the community, and making an actual donation instead of a purchase of advertising.
And I don't, and I would argue back, without having this drag out, that those are not exclusive, they're not individually exclusive. I think that you can advertise, and you might spend five thousand dollars to advertise and see two thousand dollars' worth of that, but that's still community, and so if you can donate and leverage that, and somebody else can benefit, I don't, I don't really see where there's a problem. I don't think we should be promoting alcohol to youth, but by the same token, if Lozinski Construction wants to sponsor a ballpark, or the whole doggone set of them, I think he should be able to step up and write the big check.
So...
They're trolling there.
Thank you, Craig, I assume you're done with your report.
I am now.
I met with the Community Services Advisory Board, we had a lot of information. The good and the bad is that we're not going to meet again until August as a full committee, we're going to meet subcommittees, and Scott astutely assigned us all to our own subcommittees, and we're going to meet twice, so basically monthly, in that ninety-day window. Community Services rolling out their summer programs, everybody should have gotten their flyer in the mail. It was interesting to know, Scott told us that there's, how many, Scott? Ten thousand, fifteen thousand of those that go out? It's a huge number. Yeah, it's a huge number, so it was really, really interesting. And then the new logo is going to come out, the new logo, when you look at the old Community Services logo, the research done did not really do a good job about marketing, nobody could see that logo and say, oh, Marshall Community Services, what does it mean, you know? The new one is more impactful, showing that it's community services, and it's about community, so I look forward to seeing that logo start rolling out probably in the fall, so, yep. And the EDA, they had the meeting when I was in Mexico, so I'll defer that to John.
Glenn?
Public Housing Commission met yesterday, they're still working on their non-smoking policy. They also approved the audit report for the fiscal year 2016.
Very good, John?
Steve, you didn't miss the EDA meeting since the last time we met, you just missed the report, the last one, so you're okay. Mine did not meet.
David?
Police Advisory Board meets next Monday.
And Jim?
The Community Center meets tomorrow, and Transit, Mayor Marshall, their Transit meets next week, so they did not meet.
Very good. We'll move then to agenda number twenty-four. Councilmember individual items, Jim, do you have anything?
I do. Last week, Nick and I went to meet with a business owner who had some issues that he's been dealing with for years and years. I want to commend Nick, because he said, well, let's meet at his place, not at our office. It was a very, very good meeting. I want to say our State Minister is very open to that, and if you guys have issues, contact Nick and go alter them. I think we had a very good dialogue, I'm sure Nick comments on in his section. Other than that, I have nothing.
I was a little chagrined that the small, little request I made two weeks ago to pull the taxi cab ordinance off of the consent agenda opened up a lengthy, freewheeling discussion tonight, in which I had no participation, but I may have some thoughts when we take it up in two weeks. Just want to make a comment here, that part of what I learned from the opportunity to gather information, to talk to different people, I guess was a delayed awareness of the significant amount of entrepreneurial activity we have in this community, whether it's taxi cabs licensed or otherwise, and of course, things that are more visible from immigrants. And that's something we don't know much about, and that's something we need to, not we, the city, but we, the community, need to understand better and find ways to encourage and promote. So that's something I've put in a follow-up with more discussion with the Chamber of Commerce. They're the natural place to pursue that, to develop it, to get some of these new business owners, and future business owners together, and find how we can work together. So hopefully more to come soon on that.
Thank you, David. John?
Just one item kind of slipped through quietly on our consent agenda, but we did end up paying the bills, and just note, one of those items in there was to a particular council member who took the time to go down and get a trailer and save the city, I think about three, almost three thousand dollars. So thanks, Craig.
Really? I did that?
Very good.
Well, maybe, yeah.
Thank you, John, thanks.
Just another road.
Thank you, John. Craig, then we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything other than to say that it was a privilege to do that, I actually enjoy that, that's, it's kind of like, there's an outstanding resident and longtime businessman in this community that in 2002, after the beam came back, made some comments and wanted to compensate for that, and I just want to say that, you know, as Councilman Baricola said, you know, we all give things in a different way, and that's one of the things, there's not a lot of things I can do for the community, but that's one of the things that I can, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. I appreciate the fact that the city was fair and equitable about compensating me a fair mileage rate to do that, so it didn't cost me anything, but there's a lot of pride in being able to... But there's a lot of pride in being able to step up and do small things like that to help the community. And what's really nice about that is our staff did a great job of working through a potential another large change order to really set that concession area up at the ballfields nicely. And they saw an opportunity to, to do something probably as nice or nicer and make it available to other areas of the community and do it for about a fourth of the money. And so, my thought when I heard that, and Preston and I talked about what it was going to take to bring the trailer back, by doing it the way we did it, I think we freed up enough money for him to put a lot of the other things inside for that same dollar. So, it leverages, and I'm just really proud that we were able to do that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Craig. Steve?
The only question I have, I'm going to, I'm going to address to, to Mr. Olson, and it's just a goofy question, again, trying to save a taxpayer a dollar or two. On the third of May, we had snow, and we plowed. Why? Because the fourth, it was 70 degrees.
We have two reasons for that. One is, if you don't plow it, you get a number of calls. If you do plow it, you get a number of calls. So, so, so it's, it's just a determination. At the time, we had a considerable amount of snow to move to the sides. We actually blocked some sidewalks with all the snow that came off the parking areas in the downtown area. We got calls that said, "Thank you for making our parking areas clear," even though I had to push the snow off the sidewalk, because we weren't picking it up. We didn't pull it to the center. So, that was why. Even, even though it was, warm weather was coming, we thought could be a lot of accidents with leaving that slushy, heavy snow there. So, that's...
Fair enough.
And to comment on that, because I actually made a, a last-minute notice run down to Iowa that night in the snow and came back about, well, it took, it took me over an hour to get back from Slaton with an empty semi. And down through the Garvin Park, coming up the hill, there was a pickup stuck going northbound halfway up the hill, a number of them in the ditch. I luckily made it up with, with the truck, but it was scratching and digging the whole way up. And what happens with that is, is that if, as soon as people start to drive on it and it piles, because that snow doesn't blow, it piles, and then it stacks with water. As soon as you hit that, it pulls. And I think we would have had a lot of, it, it's just, and it's terrible, because that slush plugs all the storm intake, so when it melts, you end up with ponding, but I'd rather drive through water than slush.
We had the same discussions, though. Should we, shouldn't we?
Personally, I wish MinDOT would have been out plowing that night, because I, I don't get scared very easy in the semi, and I was, I was afraid that night.
And we don't have the speeds they do in the rural. There was a dozen cars in the ditch from here to Porter.
Yeah, it was bad.
So, yeah, it was, it was real bad.
It was bad.
Anything else, Steve?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
I think I've used my quarter of time.
Craig, good. Who's calling?
We don't keep points.
We'll move then to agenda item number twenty-five, Staff Report. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And Jim put me on the spot there. Yep, last Tuesday, I had a good meeting with a business owner, with Jim and the business owner, discussing development, proposed development that he was looking at, went over, resolved some issues, talked about some others that will still need future resolution. But, yep, reach, making sure that when you have a concerned businessman like that, making sure you go to their place of business to make sure they're comfortable talking about it. Go see the site itself, and just do those sort of things that ought to be done. Last week, Wednesday afternoon through Friday, I was off in Nisswin, Minnesota for the annual Minnesota City and County Management Association Conference. It's every year. It's one that we have the highest attendance of city managers at this one, with 208, I believe it was. Well-attended, great seminars, great breakout sessions, a really good conference to go to. Also, continuing to work on our citywide communications, starting to bolster up the social media, working with Dan Pollak here, who is in the audience tonight, with radio show items. They are now able to take those, stream them online, and now, now we have collaboration between Studio One and the radio station to link those together so that you can go to either source and, and get a hold of that information. Continue implementing more on the website, more on social media, working greater collaboration with the newspaper on items, just enhancing those relationships to get those things that the city does out to the public. And then also, tomorrow, the school district is having their first strategic planning session. This is not facility-related, but other items they do plan to go over, and it's about a group of thirty, thirty-five in that main group. That's my report.
Okay. Question for Nick. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've gone through most of the projects that are going on. Construction is starting all over town, and if you have any questions or comments, refer